Kenny.
Here.
Who fall. Franek.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Stendar.
Here.
Berlin.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Usay.
Here, online.
Mika.
Here.
Btech.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Shudy.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Murdick.
Here.
Elifson. McKenzie.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Metzener.
Here.
Campbell. Ray is excused. Nineteenth present.
Next we'll go to be observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Sound.
Ron Stender will make a motion.
John? Who made the motion?
Ron Stender.
And seconded by Kathy Shudy. Followed in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next we go to the public comment period, three minutes per person. Thirty minutes for all public comments. Uh, did you sign in? That's okay, that's okay, you're ahead. Because we're limited to three minutes, I'm gonna do a quick handout. Oh mine. I see on the agenda today that the town of San Bern there's an update and discussion about town of San Bern. Not on the agenda, so I thought that I'd at least give a little synopsis of what I know and I've been involved in this subject as I'm a resident of the town of San Bern. And I also brought Kevin Cottney, which has property in the town of San Bern. And it was affected very deeply with the recent activity out there, but I've included several documents here. Try to give everybody a little synopsis of what's transpired in the town of San Bern.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Scott Bredding. I live at six, six, seven, five, eight, B front road in the town of San Bern. I've lived there over thirty years. Um, and I've seen a lot of changes in the town of San Bern. I am a taxpayer in the town of San Bern. Um, what you're, I'm just gonna try to go through the documents that I have here and give you a synopsis of what's transpired. Um, on the cover letter or on the cover here is a clerk's report for two thousand twenty-two where the clerk has taken the valuation of the town and has reduced the value of the town um from thirty-two million to seventeen million, but included the thirty-two million that was budgeted um in the state's portion, the county and the town's portion, the school district's portion, and divided that up to come up with a mill rate of point zero four four, which is a mill rate that's totally fictitious of what um is the portionment for the town, uh, which has basically over doubled the amount that would be owed by the taxpayers. The second page is a uh, calculation that I put together of what the actual mill rate um was and what it should be, yeah, which would have been a fifty-four percent reduction um compared to the mill rate similar in the previous year. I'm sorry. Um, the third page um is what the assessor has um uh set in place for um the equalized value. Again, I did bring Kevin and he's gonna give me his three minutes to talk also, um, if that's okay. So um so the assess, uh, the assessor has put together his valuation of the town, which is thirty-two million. So it's my three minutes, so I got another three minutes of. Okay.
Let's let me make a motion to allow.
I'll make a motion that we allow Scott Bredding's partner here to take his three minutes.
Ron Stender will second.
Thank you.
The assessor, when he puts in his value, which is the same, um, uses putting in the equation for the equalized value of the school district, shared revenue on the roads, the county, so on. Um, that's calculated through the assessed assessment of valuation of property. Again, it's not totally accurate because there's a lot of properties that have not been included on there. It has not been included for several years. The firm revenue has not done their job, nor has the county in checking those for accuracy. And there is a lot of properties that have not been included. And if there's only so few questions later, we won't happen to answer them. The next page shows my property and where it went. Um, yeah, right, and two thousand twenty-one uh, one had approximately ten thousand dollars in taxes to twenty-two thousand dollars in taxes. Um, when the county makes a kind of assumption or anybody here makes something that this was new or that this problem is something that nobody was ever aware, it's been going on since two thousand and six. And it's not a so-called problem. It's something that we should all be talking about and trying to work to. Um, you know, the agreement of of taxation between um the tribe and the town and the state. Um, it's been a discussion since eighteen fifty-four. Eighteen eighty-seven, the general law act allows the tribes to own property within the reservation. They allow them to sell property to non-tribal members. Once they sold it, it became taxable. There's all kinds of disputes in law and all kinds of arguments from there, then adjudicated several times. However, several other laws, um, but it it's been in Supreme Court and in and out of court, uh, natural court, federal court, state court. We brought it to state court in two thousand sixteen, where um the township removed the property from backlog and then it went back on the tax roll. In two thousand twenty-two, it came and the final is uh, what the D R says, basically, you're on your own. Um, they have not given us any uh, before at all. So I know it's on the agenda, you're more than happy to answer any questions when that's on the agenda. Come on, there's a lot more.
Scott, I'd just like to say one thing here, Ashton County is doing everything they can to help you guys.
Point of order.
Giving up on it.
Point of order.
Kim Lavasser.
Could you please make sure that that microphone is turned on?
I'd like to sit here, please.
Uh.
Why does that matter? Good morning, everyone. My name is Kim Lavasser. Like I told the executive committee a couple of weeks ago, even though Dan Grady said that I am a distraction and should not be allowed into any board meetings or to talk, it is still my First Amendment right and I am coming to talk to you all. I received the letter from my grievance appeal hearing on May twenty-seventh. It was not mailed from the courthouse until May twenty-third. According to the policy, the grievance policy in the manual from the courthouse, it states, I must be informed by the county no later than ten calendar days from the board meeting. It was mailed out late. For those of you that have not listened to my grievance hearing, Dan Grady stated during testimony that he and Brian Zupke had approximately ten conversations last fall about my performance as jail administrator. I have a copy of the personnel complaints policy from the Ashen County Sheriff's Office. I've highlighted where it states that my supervisor at the time, Chief Deputy Brian Zupke, should have completed a complaint form. It also says that if the integrity of the investigation is jeopardized by writing the complaint, then it must be orally reported to the sheriff, which was Sheriff Brennan. Dan Grady said that I quote, under in, that I was quote, under investigation, but could not produce any documentation of this. Nothing was put in my personnel file. I know this because I got a copy of my personnel file in early February. It also states in the policy that interviews of an accused member shall be conducted during reasonable hours. I was never interviewed regarding anything. I never even knew that there was anything wrong until after I was fired as jail administrator, some three months later. Why is it that Chief Deputy Brian Zupke can violate policy by not writing anything or interviewing me? Why is it that Sheriff Zupke can violate law by not living in Ashland County? Why is it that the county board can violate policy by not sending the letter to me in a timely manner? I also have the page from my decision from John Carlson stating that, quote, there did not appear to be any testimony to prove these allegations were true or untrue about me violating policies. Brian Zupke said that the jail is running smoothly since my termination. I wonder how he's decided that since there's been a death, an overdose, and an almost riot just a month ago. Why have six people resigned since I was fired? The confidential secretary, my replacement, the monitor sergeant, a dispatcher, a patrol deputy, and the dispatch supervisor all have resigned. What exactly is going on that everyone is quitting? And finally, to quote one jailer who told me about one of the sergeants that they put in charge of the jail, he's careless, oblivious, and dangerous. He's going to get himself or someone else very hurt or killed. How can you say this is running smoothly? Here are copies of all of the policies and information that I have, which is actual policy.
Brian, Zupke, did you want to speak?
Hello, my name is Brian Zupke, Sheriff for Ashen County. I decided to come here today based on watching the last grievance hearing, seeing how some votes went to the other way. And I wanted to cite, uh, you know, it seems like a popularity contest right now and citing false accusations every day, every week. Um, this matter of the fact is, sexual assaults have occurred for two months straight in that jail, two months. When one came forward as a victim, they weren't even separated right away. It wasn't investigated until November twenty-ninth, when I found out. During, before that, her and the past sheriff had secret meetings, several that didn't include me. Never had included me, for what reason, other than I was hoping, I'm guessing for it to go away. When I found out, I approached county administrator and corporate counsel. We decided the best course of action was to wait till I started sheriff because we were afraid of destruction of evidence. So when that was concluded, it's not how I wanted to start my sheriff term out. I heard several people say, why didn't you offer a job? There's reports, videos, audios. When I brought my office, I said, you're demoted. I offered her a job, she called me a liar and said I knew about the entire investigation. Multiple times I ended the meeting. I tried to be the good person, give her a job, and she still doesn't take responsibility. Every day, she should be ashamed of herself that she goes out in public and cites all these false accusations every, every week. So if anybody, everybody is welcome to come to my office and view all of this. The fact that the paper is putting in what she says, what's bringing me forward is I saw her last Facebook post. Her family member of hers made a racist comment and called me a wagon burner. I'm not tolerating that. I'm standing up to this all. So anybody wants to talk to me, come to my office and I'll show you all the facts. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online for public comment? And is anybody?
Does anybody online wish to make a comment?
Yes, I do. Um, my name is Leanna Goose and I ask that you all please help shut down line five immediately. An oil spill in this area would be devastating to our nation's economy and freshwater. This pipeline is aging. It is seven years old and it is operating illegally in Bad Rivers territory. This pipeline threatens a huge percentage of the nation's fresh water. We must protect our nation's water because we needed to survive. We have to begin to choose water over oil. We can survive without oil, but not without water. I care for the next generations. Let's not, let's not take any chances when it comes to their future. Let's all work together to get this disaster in waiting shut down. I am willing to pay a little more for gas for peace of mind, and I'm sure that many others would agree. It's going to take all of us and these different government agencies working together to protect our water. Me, Gwich, Biz and Dawia, thank you all for listening.
Anybody else?
Is there anybody else online that wishes to speak?
Uh, this is Cheryl Barnes. I posted in the chat, but if there's time, I'd be happy to speak.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, I, I just wanna pull up something here. Um, I wanna uplift what Leanna just shared about line five. I came here also because there's an emergency right now everyone doesn't know about. Um, line five was built seventy years ago. It was built, designed to last for fifty years. It's very old and decrepit. It has spilled thirty-four times over a million gallons of oil. Um, you all know that it crosses northern Wisconsin into Michigan and right under the Great Lakes. It's very dangerous. Um, right now, the Bad River meander is getting closer and closer to the pipe itself. It's within feet um, because of all the flooding. Um, any day now, we're one storm away from that river, which is a rushing river with debris in it. Um, from pulling the land out from under and around that pipeline. Um, it could break a guillotine rupture at any time, which would shoot oil out of both sides. That would be the worst case scenario. This location is sixteen miles upstream from Lake Superior. So it would not take long for a spill to reach the Great Lakes and compromise the water that millions of people depend on. So the ask here is, we need to shut down line five. It's an emergency. The Bad River Band has done everything they can to get through legal channels to get this shut down. Um, and we're asking everyone in the community to uplift that ask. Um, the pipeline needs to be shut down and it takes five days to empty it out to prevent a spill. Um, President Biden also has the power, and I dropped a link in the chat. He has the power to revoke the permit for that. We need to come up with the clean energy solutions at this point and stop relying on something so dangerous. Um, with the remainder of my time, I'd like to read a couple of statements from Bad River Band members who couldn't be here today. Um, some of them are over in Superior, actually. Um, some county council members from another county are visiting the Embridge facility there to hear about how much money it's making, which has been great, but it is too dangerous to continue on this path. This is a statement from Aurora Conley, who's Bad River Ojibwe and the Shinabe Environmental Protection Alliance. She said, as a Bad River Band of Lake Superior Ojibwe member, I'm calling on the Biden administration to shut down line five immediately. Our territories and water are in imminent danger. We do not want to see irreversible damage to our land, water, and wild rice. We do not want our lifeways destroyed. The Ojibwe people are here in Bad River because of the wild rice. A rupture from this oil spill will irreversibly harm the Great Lakes and the wild rice beds. This is unacceptable. Please shut down line five now.
I doubt.
Is there more time?
So sorry, your three minutes is up.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else online want to comment? Anyone else online for public comment? This is the last call. Anyone else online for public comment or we're gonna close the public comment period? Hearing none, we're gonna move right along. The regular agenda, what a four A approval of the April twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three and May tenth county board minutes. Need a motion? Motion by Matt McKenzie. Seconded by Ron Stender. Followed in favor say aye.
Aye. This is Mike Stark and I've got a comment on the, or a chat or question on the May tenth uh, meeting minutes. And let me just, uh, when we says that we approved the uh, but the, the, the hearing officer's decision. And um, after the meeting, I got a email from a constituent, that's the attorney that says, I watched the county board meeting recording and believe that a serious parliamentary error occurred. According to Roberts Rules of Order, a motion to reconsider can be made only by someone who voted on the prevailing side on the original vote. Ie, someone changed their mind. I believe the motion to reconsider was made by a board member on the losing side, hence the vote to reconsider was invalid and therefore so was the subsequent vote to accept the hearing officer's findings. Really happy that, that we didn't follow parliamentary procedure when uh, uh, we revoked it. Like that we reflected the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carries. But a four B assessing climate and weather risk opportunities.
Say. Mr. Bussay, do you wanna speak on this?
Uh, sure, I can make a few comments. This uh, it came out of the egg extension committee, was approved by egg and extension forward to executive and approved by executive to be on the agenda today. Um, I originated much of this out of concern for accountability from our county departments regarding extreme weather events, uh, present and future. And I wanted to suggest a process that was kind of the sleeves off our vest. Basically, something that we should already be doing uh, using existing department personnel and existing committee processes uh, on an annual basis to bring to the board's attention uh, how our departments and our administration is dealing with risks and opportunities related to extreme weather and related climate issues. So I think this is a very efficient approach without establishing a task force, perhaps. Some of us may or may not want to establish some kind of task force in the future, but it's quite a bureaucratic process. I think we could approve this procedure and pass it on to the county administrator uh, without much ado. So I'm in favor of it. I guess I would move to adopt and see if there's anybody to second.
I, this is.
Wait a minute. Uh, doesn't say anything about, about.
You don't have your mic on?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on. Yes, Laura.
I have questions about this. Um, what does this look like in implementation? George?
Okay, I think actually uh, the steps A through F define the implementation. Basically, you're asking the county administrator to have each department look at their risk and opportunities uh, and then to discuss that with their related county board committees. And then for a committee appointed by the chair, which is our standing committee, but is vacated, vacated at the moment uh, for the um of, what do we call it? The annual, the comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan committee, which is not currently appointed. But I suggest that, you know, that committee pull together the individual reports from all the different committees and departments and, you know, give a consolidated report up to the executive committee and to the board so that we can have some accountability as to what's going on, because that seems to be our role uh, to hold the administration and the county in general operations accountable to their constituents when we represent. So that's the process. So that's the process. This is the process laid out in this proposal.
Just to follow up. My, my view of this would be that the weather and climate issues would be taken up by emergency management, since that's who would have to deal with anything, and for them to go through and, and maybe plan with each one of the departments. I don't know that we need extra committees to do this. It can be a directive or, but to the emergency management person or an ordinance that we write to have each one look into this with the emergency management personnel?
Kathy.
Laura, what George was starting from in the beginning was he wanted, he wanted it not put on the back burner, this climate change issues that we're dealing with, so that each of the personal head, the department heads would have an accurate, up-to-date definition of what climate change is doing to our county. So we aren't asking for another committee or anything like that. It's just to keep it on the front burner, so we're talking about climate change and how it affects our area. So I am going to second George's motion to move this forward. It's not another committee.
And I'm still going to reiterate that I think that emergency management is the one to handle this.
We don't even have an emergency.
I was talking to the chair.
Do we have an emergency management person in place yet then? Pardon?
June 26th.
There you go.
Tom.
Pat.
Addressing the chair.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, George.
Okay, this is not an emergency management proposal. This is an avoidance of problems proposal. The long-term implications for forestry are not an emergency management consideration. The, the, the long-term planning for the strengths of the roofs on our county buildings is not an emergency management situation. It's a much broader, this is a thinking ahead, looking at the long term, looking for monies that can help us provide for the long term and avoid emergencies. So I think that's misplaced to put it in emergency management, although I wouldn't object. If that were the, the only place to find coordination, that would be okay with me. But I don't think it qualifies as oh, it does not wholly qualify as emergency management. If we have emergencies, we failed in what is intended to achieve.
Pat.
I'm supportive of trying to find a way to work on this topic. Mr. Busey brought this forward in the Land and Water Conservation Committee. It was then suggested it go to Extension. Extension said, yes, we're working on some of this, and now we moved to this. And so one of the things that strikes me is, well, I think most people are supportive of doing something. There tends to be a reluctance to having another committee, and it's kind of getting kicked from one place to another. And so it reminds me of the city of Ashland, which became an equal municipality about 20 years ago. At the time, they had council members who were interested in this. They provided leadership. They got some things done. But when the council changed, and this became a lesser priority, things effectively came to a standstill. And so they tried to do something very similar to what's in front of us here with the city, and basically nothing, for all practical purposes, happened. And I was on the council for about five of those years, so I'm reminded that this really didn't work, because department heads had other things on their plate. They didn't know really how to coordinate things. There was no way to facilitate that. And ultimately, it comes down to a budget issue. What can we afford? And if we're applying for grants, who's going to write the grants, et cetera? So I see the proposal as not being an effective way to move forward. I think it would be ineffective. I think there's other counties in Wisconsin and on land and water conservation, we were given one to look at. I've looked at their website, their committee meeting minutes and agendas. I think that's working quite well. Our department head for land and water conservation pointed us in that direction. I think we should revisit that so holistically, not just as a county with our different departments, but with everyone else here. There may be pieces that emergency management services could be highly involved with, or, you know, frankly, take the leadership on. And the same with some other things. And so I think they have pretty effective ways of actually addressing things. But they do have a committee that meets, and it involves stakeholders, county and otherwise. And so they're not duplicating things, but they also find a way of figuring out ways to support things. Land and water conservation is a big piece of it for a variety of reasons, but they have to coordinate those things. And ultimately, it comes down to dollars also. So, Mr. Busey, I'd be happy to spend some time outside of meetings and seeing if we can put our heads together to craft something else to bring forward. I'm not going to support this particular one, but I still, and it's just because I don't think it'll be effective, but I am interested in working with you on another proposal.
Liz.
I just want to reiterate some of what Supervisor Kenny said, and I'm in support of anything that will help our land and water quality. Right, this is now, the climate is changing and the erosion and everything. If we can prevent a disaster, thank you, George.
Addressing the chair.
Go ahead. I'm generally in favor of this proposal. It seems to me that it's not too big of a burden to have each department head at least once a year, give some thought to this and note it. And maybe, there may be nothing that comes out of it, but somebody might come up with something. So I think the idea that everybody, at least once a year, give it some thought is a good idea. Anybody else?
Addressing the chair.
Go ahead, George.
Just want to say that this doesn't require any additional employees. If you don't like the idea of having the comprehensive plan committee deal with this, simply make it a requirement that the county administrator report to us once a year. I'm simply looking for accountability. I want to know that every department is addressing this issue. And if they don't have any problems, that's fine with me. I'm here to, to ask for accountability from the administrator and all of our departments. As simple as that.
What else?
Kathy. Very brief. If you remember back a month or two ago, they had somebody sitting here, I think it was the, from your committee, George, the lady. Yeah, and she said, "Central Ashland County is on the record to be a terrible flood part for Central Ashland County, and they're working on this constantly. This is not the last flood that's going to go through our county and the millions of dollars that cost, because then we will have to have emergency management at the top." This is just to bring the information forward once a year. And I agree with Liz and Marty and me and whoever else is interested in climate change and how it's affecting Ashland County. Please support this, this motion.
Point of clarification?
Matt.
I guess I've looked at this and been a part of the discussion on this, and I agree with Mr. Kenny. I think some of this work is, is worth looking at. My concern is, is the effectiveness of the way it's currently being presented to us. And I fear the same thing, is that it's going to just end up being busy work as it is. Mr. Busey brought up a good point, though. I think that if this is something we're of interest in, directing our county administrator to make it a part of his evaluation process, obviously, he, you know, controls our, our staff, with the exception of the elected positions. That that would make sense if, if we wanted to have a brief synopsis of what the concerns are. He could gather that as part of his evaluation process, and that would make more sense to me than establishing another committee.
Thanks, Matt. Laura.
Um, just to clarify, I know it says emergency management there. That's not just when things happen. Emergency management has been helping us prepare for lots of things, climate-related, that could happen. I know we don't have someone in place exactly yet, but Dorothy wrote grants to help with erosion control along the beaches and out on Bedlam Island. She's worked with highway and different places where there might be washes. So that's what emergency management does, is look at those climate pieces. So having that, that person either with Dan, evaluate these things and talk to the different departments. I'm not against this. I just don't see this as as something that, the way it's written, and I get it. I'm very supportive of how you do this, did this, George, and, and I get where you're trying to go. I just would like to see a vision of yours that is effective and implementable.
When I look at Part D, I've got a couple of questions, and depending on the answers to those questions, maybe this is a path forward and something that I would see as, as becoming effective, because I don't want this to die. When I was on the city council, you know, if it wasn't on the agenda, we couldn't do anything, and therefore, you know, it just, it just wasn't something that was working. But in D, it says a consolidated annual, notice the word annual there, of the comprehensive and ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees by their very nature are temporary. And so on the one hand, we're saying we're not creating a new committee, but if we're going to have annual reports, then on the comprehensive planning committee, they would have to continue to meet annually, as opposed to just when they're updating the comprehensive plan. So perhaps instead of calling it an ad hoc committee, we had a comprehensive planning committee that we then recognize we are going to have meeting annually, so it's not ad hoc. So in a sense, we're not adding a new committee, but we're just saying this committee that's typically ad hoc is going to have annual meetings. And then we give them a charge, and I think that charge could be fleshed out later, or that charge could flesh out what that committee sees as opportunities, resources, challenges, et cetera, as ways of moving this forward. And through that, looking at what other counties are doing to see if there's things that we would want to continue to move forward. So then it becomes a charge of that planning committee on an annual basis, as opposed to, because if it's ad hoc, it's supposed to cease. And that's inconsistent with the word annual in the beginning of D.
Well, I, I agree with what Pat had just said, and I also agree with what George is trying to stress here. I'm 100% behind the climate change movement. The only problem we have is that on the agenda, assessing weather risks and opportunities, it doesn't say anything about any action to be taken. If we're following what the agenda says, I don't think we can act on it.
Addressing the chair.
It's, yeah, just so everybody can hear. The agenda is an action item, and the document is on the screen in front of you. So this is a, you can vote yes, you can vote no, you can move, vote to refer to a committee, you can do whatever, or table, postpone, whatever you guys want to do.
Addressing the chair.
Go ahead.
Addressing the chair.
Yeah, I said, go ahead, George.
Oh, okay. I would like to move to table this proposal for consideration at our next, next regularly scheduled county board meeting pending possible amendment. Do I have a second?
This is Pat. I'll second.
Motion and a second on the floor to table this issue to the next county board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Most than carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Go to 4C, Notice of Claims Town of La Pointe.
Okay, so in order to file a lawsuit against any government organization, be that a town, a village, a city, a county, the state, commissioned, whatever it is, a notice of claims has to be filed with that government body. In January, the Town of La Pointe filed the notice of claims against Ashland County over the La Pointe Police Department issue. And their notice is attached in the document. Our attorneys recommend denying it. Accepting it would mean that we accept, we agree with whatever they say. And so our attorneys recommend denying.
Mike. I've got a question for a discussion on that that's been asked. What does the county spend on legal fees to this date on this claim?
I don't know that number offhand.
Wait, is there, can I get that information after the meeting, or?
Yes, you can give it to.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we deny this.
Excuse me, Laura, that was a motion to deny the claim. Okay, we'll second it. Marty. We have a motion by Laura. To deny the claim, and a second by Marty Vitek.
Question.
Discussion.
Addressing the chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out that I don't see any claim that the sheriff has defaulted in his duties. And so I don't consider their claim valid. They, they state right within their claim that the sheriff is required to be the party to enforce the laws. And I see no claim of abdication of the duties of the sheriff, and therefore I don't think the claim is valid, and I support the preceding motion.
All right, we're ready to vote. Have a motion to deny on a second.
Roll call.
Pardon me? Okay, roll call, please.
Houfal.
Yes.
Franek.
No.
Stark.
No, no.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Micah.
Yes.
Vitek.
Yes.
Huber.
Yeah.
Trudy.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Elifson.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzener.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
119, yes, pass. 19, yes, pass. It should be 17.
Okay, motion passes 17 to 2. No, 17 to 2. There's two members missing. All right, so I'll let our attorneys know that we denied the claim, and they'll take appropriate action.
All right, next we'll move along to 4D, ordinance 006 2023-124, abandoned property ordinance.
All right, so we currently don't have an ordinance that tells county departments what to do with property that the public has abandoned. So our Sheriff's Department in particular has abandoned property piling up and taking up space for years. And since the public hasn't claimed it, they need to dispose of it somehow. But this affects every single department, so highway could be picking up stuff and then having to store it until somebody claims it. The same could go for any other department. So this ordinance creates an ordinance that gives guidance to county departments on how to properly dispose of unclaimed property.
All right. I have a question. Is this like buildings too, or is this just personal property?
It's just personal property, just personal property.
So it should be abandoned personal property ordinance?
No, just abandoned properties.
Well, property would be my house if I, you know what I'm saying?
Well, effectively, if you abandon your house and don't pay your taxes, the county takes that too and sells it.
Done.
It was brought up to executive. It was brought up to executive committee. Because it affects every single department.
Gary.
Lawrence.
Oh, go ahead.
But I, yeah, there's a confusion maybe here. This isn't talking about houses in particular. This is talking about the sheriff gets a motorcycle. As an example, somebody, somebody abandons a motorcycle because they're missing. And it's, they have a motorcycle in their warehouse or something for ten years. It's a chance for the sheriff's department to get rid of, I'm over explaining that, but it's, it's items that they may take or another department has, every, almost every unit of government has some way to get rid of that property after so many years or months or whatever it takes. So I just use that motorcycle because I know they had one at one time that was abandoned.
And it could be, you know, somebody passed away. And they, they had, you know, say they were in jail, they had that motorcycle, they passed away and the family never claimed it. Well, after a time, what, I mean, the county's still holding on to it and holding on to it, I mean, because we have no ordinance telling us how to get rid of it. So this is just enabling all departments in the county, doesn't, not to sheriff, although that's where it happens the most, to get rid of this property.
Go ahead, Bill.
I move for adoption.
I'll second it.
Laura.
I have a couple of concerns with this. I don't see a process for notifications because, okay, we just had this example of if the family didn't know about the property. So there is no noted process for notification to the family member. And also, I think thirty days is a little short. I'd like to see a ninety days in there. That gives a little bit, and it still provides enough time to turn over where it's not ten years.
Matt. Yeah, I agree with those comments. I think ninety days would be more appropriate. I'd also like to see a clause in there about just throwing some stuff out. If you end up with the left mitten and, you know, somebody else has got the right mitten, at some point, we shouldn't have to jump through hoops to get rid of that. After, you know, ninety days, nobody's claimed their left mitten, that should go in the garbage. And we shouldn't spend any more time on it. So if, if we could make those changes to this ordinance, I would be in support of it. Ninety days, a notification process where we do know who the owner might be or who might have claims to it and a provision in there to just dis, maybe set a dollar amount or something about the value of less than a certain amount. It can be just pitched, it doesn't have to do. So.
I would amend my motion.
I'll second that.
I have a question for Dan.
Yes, sir.
People who own property who we've been storing it for years, are they notified every once in a while to get it out of there, dispose of it, or?
If, yeah, if we know who it is, they're notified. So, so if you had the abandoned motorcycles, that's the example we're using, the sheriff's department would have notified you that we have it. If you did nothing about it, you abandoned it. So, and, you know, some property of, like the left mitten, no, we have no way of knowing whose that is, so we can't notify anybody. But anything that you can determine whose property is, is notified, ready.
How often do they do that?
Well, as soon as they get the property.
But then periodically or no?
That I don't know if they do it periodically.
Was on for ten years, how many times were they notified?
Well, they were notified at least once, and in the case of a death, the estate would be notified.
Just once?
Well, at least once, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's not much of a notice. Okay, Mike.
Why doesn't this ordinance say personal property? Because in the paragraphs, it refers to personal property. Anyway, isn't that confusing, property versus personal property? Shouldn't it be a personal property ordinance? They talk about motorcycles, guns, flammable explosives.
Dark, if you want to amend your ordinance to say personal property in the title, that's fine.
Pardon me?
If you want to amend the ordinance to say personal property.
I think it should say personal property.
I second that.
Yeah, I, I.
Bill.
I would amend my motion to say personal property also.
And I'll second Bill's second motion.
All right, now we got all kinds of stuff going on here.
Well, Heather, can you, can we just start to get a baseline?
Yes.
And Heather, can you please tell us where we are?
Done. I realize this is the property ordinance, but I worked on land and zoning. I thought that last year or year before that we passed a cleaning ordinance for the land and zoning. I imagine that has something separate, but it still has a cleanup ordinance that we passed to the land and zoning that I thought a couple of years ago. George Mitchel, would you inform that on me? About the cleaning ordinance that we did on the land and zoning? Did we pass an ordinance on that?
We have policies.
We have policies, but not ordinances on it. Okay, sorry about that.
So Heather, one thing we'd like to, when they amend the thing that it goes from thirty days to ninety days, and then the next one was, instead of saying property, it's a personal property. Was there something else we were going to add to it?
Mr. McKenzie mentioned something about a minimum dollar amount. Would you like to set a specific number?
Point of order. Addressing the chair. We haven't voted on any of these so-called amendments.
Yes, we have.
You have?
We're trying to figure out what the motion actually is.
Yeah, we're working on it.
So there's no amendment on the table, on the floor at the moment?
That's, yeah, we're actually trying to figure out what the amendment, amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Pat.
Couple of comments. First, instead of saying personal property, I would just suggest we say property because how can a county employee tell whether it's personal property or business property? Just say property, because if you don't know who the owner is, you don't know which it falls under. So just property. But I do have a, I want to support a policy on this, but I have a very deep concern about how this is written. And there is no language in there that says whether a county employee can take this home or not. So let's go back to this motorcycle. Suppose there's a twenty thousand dollar Harley that's been abandoned. Does the sheriff have the right to saddle up and ride that home and say it's mine? Because according to this policy, I don't see anything that prevents him from doing that. On the other hand, there is language in here that says when things are sold, the proceeds go to the county treasurer. So I think the employees need guidance on whether they can take the property home or not, whether they can give it to other employees or not, and whether they can give it to friends or not. We don't, just don't have any guidance on if that's acceptable or not. And I think one of the, there's two reasons that's important. One is, we don't want backlash from the public if those sort of things happen where that twenty thousand dollar motorcycle could have helped defer taxes. But we also don't want our employees put in a position where, you know, this is how it goes. Sometimes when employers want to let somebody go, they go through the laundry list of the rules and say, ah, this one's been violated. We want to make sure this is clear to the employees so that they know what that guidance is, so they can stay within that. So we don't later say, oh, well, you understood that twenty thousand dollar motorcycle should have been sold instead of taken home. The language needs to be clear, and this doesn't speak to it at all.
So now that we've got the issues thoroughly confused, well, I think probably what we should do with this is table it until we get something more definite on all the changes you guys wanted made. I don't care if you shake your head or not. We got three things to vote on one issue. We can't do that. We have to clarify it. So first of all, you want to change it to change the name of it to personal property ordinance. Second of all, you want to change the time limit on it. Now, third, is what Pat just said. I think we have to send this back and reword it. Can't possibly deal with this in my dissecting in three pieces. If you want to change the name, we can vote on that. If you want to change the time, we can vote on that. Now, what Pat just said. I don't even know what you want us to vote on, Pat.
Addressing the chair. Addressing the chair.
Marty was first.
Wait a minute, no. Who wants to floor?
Marty.
Marty, go ahead.
Please make sure, yeah, use your microphone, please.
I move that we, that we table this matter until we have an opportunity to further contemplate it.
George Musa will second.
Can I, can I ask for a clarification before you vote, Marty? I just want to, so we're switching, you want to change the title to just say, to abandon personal property? Make it ninety days? A dollar amount where they just, anything under that gets thrown away. Disposal guidance. So we'll put something in there, anything about you has to go in Wisconsin surplus, or something like that.
Go ahead, Mike.
A notification of owners.
You're done, Dan.
Number of times. Is that, is there anything else before you vote yes or no on the motion to table?
Mike, you want to the floor?
Who submitted this ordinance? Where did it come from?
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's, well, okay, so they go back to the sheriff's department to rewrite?
Yeah, I'll work with the sheriff to fix it, how the board wants.
Thank you.
Liz.
I can be a little nitpicky with the example for the glove or whatever the mitten. Can we state something that if it's like less than a certain amount, that we can donate it to the brick or something? What if somebody's walking along like, I'm missing a glove. You know, I just, my glove ripped, I need another one and I'm a poor person. Then I go to the brick, I got my glove. Thank you.
Pat. And on the part, as far as if any employees have the opportunity to take any of this home for use, that the attorney, the county attorney review this to make sure the policy is written in a way that, you know, it makes sense and is clear to the employees and then protects them if they do, you know, take that missing glove home.
All right, we have a motion in a second. On the floor, just send this back. A motion and a second on the floor to table this issue until it's straightened out. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We go to four E, Town of Sanremis discussion update.
I actually spoke to the WCA yesterday, their main lobbyist. The whole issue of Sanborn, shared revenue, everything affects counties and cities, towns, villages, will be one of the very last issues that the legislature takes up. So right now, the assembly passed their version of a bill that does not have anything to do with Sanborn in it. It's now at the senate, and they're arguing over numerous provisions in there. Meanwhile, the leadership is all talking with the governor about what to do, about everything. Shared revenue, Sanborn, I mean, it's the whole package they're looking at. I do know our representatives are going to be making a budget motion to make all the counties and towns and school districts whole, whole. That, that's roughly five and a half million dollars. So the odds are, I'm going to say less than fifty percent because we all know how the legislature is. We'll get paid, we're out. As far as the residents go, I don't know where they're at. They're still negotiating, they're still talking, nobody's saying anything. So we're, we're kind of in the dark until the legislature actually comes up with a plan. And right now, it's just, they're stuck on shares revenue in general. The governor's threatening to veto what the, what the assembly passed because it's not enough money for us. So they're supposed to meet again this week to join the finances, supposed to have their last meeting on the fifteenth, but that's going to be pushed back. So we're still in waiting mode, and we probably won't hear anything until the end of the month. At that, if that. There's been years where the legislature has not passed the budget on time, which is June thirtieth is the end of the fiscal year, and not pass the budget until August. So, and just so we know, if that happens, state law says the previous budget takes, continues. So we don't have a shutdown like the federal government one.
Kathy.
I want to thank Dan for keeping this on the front burner and not letting this just go away that the taxes are going to be increased. But these residents that are here from the town of Sanborn, I have received calls from some of them, and they had no notice on their tax statement that their taxes were doubling. And I think a courtesy note that explaining this and we have no control over this would have been helpful to some of them who really struggled to pay their taxes, that this was a double. Imagine if you looked at your tax bill and it was doubled and you didn't know anything about it. And I think the county board has a courtesy when something like this happens, just to, here's what might happen, or, you know, be careful.
Well, yeah, and honestly, we didn't know about what to do until late December, really. And the D R didn't give us guidance in that, and the month of December was spent scrambling to get everybody off the tax rolls, who should not be on the tax rolls. Luckily, I think we got everybody. I haven't heard any complaints. So you know, by that time, it was pretty apparent, by that time, tax bills went out. And we've been talking to residents, we've been talking to our legislators. Scott, I've talked to you several times. I mean, the state is trying to do something, it's just they don't know what they want to do.
Yeah.
And that's the thing.
Keep, keep, keep it on the front burner. I thank you for that.
Well, yeah, and this next item up on the agenda is directly addressing that.
And we have Scott over here with his hand up.
It's a, I can see that, Kathy, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, just as a point of order, the public is not allowed to speak at meetings. So if you want to let Mr. Brady speak, we need a motion in a second to allow that.
Motion recognized, Scott Brady.
I'll second it.
Okay, Scott, can you come back?
Point of order, don't we need to vote on that motion?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Microphone, please.
I would like to kind of straighten up a little bit of misconception. When they talk about the taxation within the town of Sanborn, look at the map up there, ninety percent of it is purple. Ninety percent of those people have never been taxed, never will be, never have. They live on trust land. They removed about fifty-four homes from the tax rolls last year. Those fifty-four homes bought fee simple property that were tribal members and removed them from the tax rolls that were paying taxes since eighteen eighty-seven, the General Allotment Act, which put them tribal members sold property to non-tribal members, they became taxable, and then they became fee simple. It was only fifty-four homes. Wasn't like we were taxing tribal members that lived on fee simple or lived on trust land. So it wasn't devastating to the tribal members that were living on trust land.
Right.
Most tribal members living within the reservation are covered under several grant programs or through the US Trust, through HUD, or through the US Trust, through HUD, through for emergency services, through the Title I for the school system are covered. The state pays general road aid for a lot of the highway and roads that are within the reservation. So there's several other programs that pay for tribal members services, and then there's agreements between the tribe and the town that pay for combined services. Garbage pickup, for instance. In the past 10 years old, the tribe has not paid for emergency services since 2017, even though they have collected the HUD funds for emergency services, they've just refused to pay those services. They have no agreement to pay it, they don't have to pay it, and a lot of times they don't have to pay it. It's an agreement, it's a gentleman's agreement or handshake, but for all intents and purposes, 90% of the people within the boundaries of the reservation are not bound to pay taxes. Now, last year, the town not only, the town treasurer not only raised the mill rate, but they put that tax one time on the back of all the taxpayers, the Department of Revenue didn't step in and say, hey, this is wrong. The county didn't step in and stop sending the tax bills, they sent them out anyhow. And nobody said, you don't have to pay it because if we didn't pay it, they would have foreclosed on our houses because we asked the Department of Revenue, if we don't pay it, what are you going to do to us if you don't pay it? Well, we wouldn't get, we didn't get a straight answer, read my letter from the Department of Revenue, it's a bunch of gibberish. It says, well, read the tax code, well, if you read their tax code, it says that you got to pay your taxes first and then file a claim against the Department of Revenue and the township and go to the Board of Review and dispute your taxes. Well, I've done that. And right now, I'm in a dispute through the Board of Review to dispute my taxes for this year. But last year, I paid them in protest. But they say, well, we may or may not send you a complete tax bill this year. Well, but the state of Wisconsin isn't going to reduce my taxes, they're not going to say my house is any less value than it was, although I'm living in an area where there is no zoning. There's no restrictions for what's going on to my neighbor's house that's not paying taxes. They can put in a trailer house, a driveway unrestricted, a septic system that's unregulated because they're a member of the Bad River Tribe. So that's the area I live in, and you're going to say, well, why do you live there? Well, because I like where I live and it's the United States of America and I'm happy living there. But there has to be something done to everybody to work together, not separate or build walls. And that's what we want to do is try to live together and work together. But there are people out there that don't want to work or live together, they want to build walls. And I'm saying here at the county board level, let's try to build community instead of dividing. And right now, the state of Wisconsin is saying, hey, you're on your own. The county board, I don't know what the resolution or solution is except for sit down and talk through it.
Right.
But there's a lot of people that are saying, well, if you don't think our way, we're not going to work with you. Well, we need to work together on it. But you can see what the damage has done right now, and we need to work through it. And there's a lot of history there, and if anybody has questions about it, I can tell you what's happened since 2006, it's a mess.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Bill?
I've been an assessor for 47 years. And the Department of Equalization set all these standards and all these rules as far as what you do. And the assessor had to go ahead and follow the rules supposedly. Sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't. Well, the biggest problem for last year's taxes were the town of Sanborn had their border review towards the end of May in 2022. And the state set the equalized value for the district and they had to release it before the 31st of August. And so they did that based on what was presented at the border review. Then in like October or so, the state, there was a federal ruling and the state came along and said, okay, we shouldn't have taxed the people. But they already had assess, set the equalized value. So they took off about 75% of the assessment roll, okay? So as a result, the town of Sanborn residents that were left still had to pay the equalized value for the county, the school and the state based on what was set in equalized value in August. So then in October, November, they went ahead and took it off, they had another reconvened and called it an air and they reconvened and took off like 75%. So in 2023, when this is corrected, taking off the equalized value, the equalized value should go down in the town of Sanborn by 75%. So your taxes should take a big nosedive down. The only taxes that are affected based on the assessment is the local tax or the town tax, that's the only one. The other stuff is based on the equalized value. So it's not going to be, and see, the state said, oh, we can't correct that because that we already figured out what we were going to do setting all the equalized values in all the districts by August 31st. So we can't change that. And so as a result of that, the taxpayers in the town of Sanborn really suffered. Okay, now, like I say, the taxes should go down at least between 50 and 75% this next, this next in 2023. I don't agree with what the state said, the state should have made some allowances or should have looked into it. They didn't even, they, the Supervisor of Equalization, Elram Portal, resigned. And he said he retired, he didn't want to deal with it. He just, he just up and retired and it was just dumped on the new person. You know, like I say, I can't, I can't believe the Department of Equalization just backed out and decided to do nothing when they directed the assessors to do this and that. Now that is just terribly wrong. And hopefully, what the Ashland County did, Ashland County had to pay all the districts in full or they couldn't charge, they could only charge 1% interest, 12% a year, and we have a half a percent penalty. If we were going to collect that half a percent penalty, we had to settle with all the districts in full. So what came down to is if someone didn't pay their taxes, the county had to go ahead and pay their share to the school, you know, the vocational school and everyone else, they had to add the town. They got, they got their share paid in full, so the county was left holding the bag. And seeing this litigation was going on, the county never foreclosed as far as taking the, taking the property because there was legal action pending. And so that's, we got, the county got stuck holding the bag. And now, this last year, the taxpayers got stuck holding the bag. So, you know, I can explain it, but the state is a lot to blame, you know, and that's, that's what I'm saying. But hopefully in 2023, it'll level off and, you know, I don't know what it'll be, but it's, like I say, it'll go down and your taxes will go down at least 50 to 75%. Depending on what the town does too, you know, if they have additional revenue because it'll just be what taxpayers are remaining.
Blake?
So, you know, I think we should, for our constituents that are being impacted, be able to project what taxes will be next year and start giving that. We're in June of now, 2023, so for 2024, we know what it is this year. But giving these like 50 to 75% kind of ideas, we should be able to show it. And then second is we need to come up with a plan for Sanborn. There's no plan right now other than waiting. And if we wait and we don't do anything, nothing is going to change. So we at the county board level have to sit down either at the executive or finance level and come up with a plan if the state legislators don't do anything, which they don't want to, what I've been seeing. So again, Scott's not wrong. I think between some of the things at the county level, we have to start for our constituents that are paying taxes, give them what it's going to be in 2024 and then start as a county talking about the future of the town of Sanborn.
Thanks, Blake.
Thank you, Blake.
Yes, I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Metzinger said. Yeah, so the equalized value is going to drop dramatically in the town. And how that's really going to affect your taxes is it's going to stop the town from being able to borrow as much. Because right now, right now, they can, they still have a huge borrowing capacity based on their current equalized value. Come January 1st, when the equalized value is reset, and it drops the 50 to 70%, so is their borrowing capacity because that's based on 5% of equalized value. So that's one of the reasons why the town is trying to move so fast right now with what they're doing is because of that. And to address Supervisor Ellefson, unfortunately, state statutes don't give us much ability to decide what to do with the town. You know, the state has taken control of everything, so at this point, you know, all we can do is wait for the state to decide what they're going to do to the town. Ultimately, the state can decide anything for the town. They can decide to increase its levy limit, they can decide to decrease its levy on. They can try, decide to give it more shared revenue or less shared revenue. They could decide to dissolve the town, they can do whatever they want to the town. And at this point, they haven't decided how they're going to handle it. Because not only the town of Sanborn, it's also the town of Lachlan Boe and Vilas County. It's also, there's a town in Bayfield County that's affected. And there's a town in Sora County that's affected and about eight properties in Iron County that are affected. So the state's looking at the whole picture, how do we solve all of these, all these town problems, not just the town of Sanborn. Sanborn just happens to be the one that's hit the hardest because it has, it has the highest concentrations of tribal members who bought land that was previously taxable. It could have happened in Bayfield County on the Red Cliff Reservation, the same way, it just happened to be here. In fact, in Bayfield, their taxes went up 40 some percent also. So, you know, literally, we have very little power at this point. The state sets the standards. They set the tax rates, they set the limits, the levy limits, they set everything.
Go ahead, Mike.
We must understand that our town of Sanborn is unique to any other reservation that's been spoken about. Because the town of Sanborn is just totally within reservation boundary. That's the uniqueness of this situation.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is insanely, you're right. And, you know, I think that's one of the issues the legislature has to grapple with too. You know, so that's what, that's another reason why it makes it so difficult to come up with a fair equitable solution that takes care of tribal members, the non-tribal members and the local units of government. And the taxpayers in the whole, every other taxpayer in the county, because I'll be honest, everybody in this room is paying to make up the tax difference in Sanborn, right, over the last few years. So.
Mike Berlin here again, it must also be noted that the school districts every year file with the federal government on how many native kids go to those schools and they're reimbursed directly from the government, not through the townships or the tax base as it is. So there's another, what do you call it? Entity that's paying for these kids to go to school.
Yeah, 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 Title I funding is coming from the federal government to the actual school district. Yeah, that's what I got, so that actually, I mean, that works in everyone's benefits. Because that means the school has to levy less because they're getting this revenue from the federal government. So that helps everyone. It's not a simple solution. And like I said, the one solution we've been advocating for, Bayfield County's been advocating for, Sawyer County also, is that we want all of, everybody to be treated fairly and equitably. That means tribal members, non-tribal members, and all units of government and all taxpayers, period. We want everyone to be treated this exact, fairly and in a uniform, in a uniform manner. And follow, and follow federal court rules.
And I believe the next item on your agenda, we will be addressing that.
Yeah, that'll be addressed not to get us to further state that we need the state to treat us as a county fairly.
I was just going to ask if we got to that part of the agenda yet, that supporting that resolution, because so.
Yeah, I just want to say something too, we have to be real cautious about telling to anybody, especially to telling us Sanborn residents what their taxes may be next year for this reason. You have schools who haven't set their budgets, you have towns that obviously didn't set their budgets. Every one of them will come in at a certain time and it's not going to be before the state gets their budget passed. So those entities know what kind of money they're, so even though we think the town of Sanborn in this case's taxes should come down, we don't want to say specifically what they could come down because we don't know what the other entities are going to be, you know, setting their budgets at. And Dan's right, if town of Sanborn's taxes collected from the people left come to the county and the schools has less money from them, guess what? Everybody else is going to pay the difference because I don't think our budgets are going down enough to make that. So we, everybody else's district's residents may see a slight increase in their percentage. Now, when you spread it across the entire county, it might not be that bad of a deal, but like I say, knowing, knowing the other districts, schools and towns, their budgets won't be ready until September, October at the earliest. So it's encouraging that town of Sanborn, hopefully we'll see a reduction, but I wouldn't want to go out there and tell people how much yet because I'm not sure what the other entities are going to be charging, thank you.
And that's even assuming the state doesn't impose their own solution, which we don't know what it's going to be if or what it's going to be.
Any more comments before we move along? Okay, next we'll go to for F, Resolution RO 62023, 1446. WCA Resolution to support the LCO versus Evers decision. Dan?
So this is the resolution we've all been talking about. Just one quick thing before you make a motion, Bayfield County is passing what they just did already. And it's almost identical version, the only difference is county name just swapped out.
Laura? This is Laura Nagrill, I'll make a motion that we support this resolution.
Yes?
This is Huber, I'll second that.
By Laura to accept the decision seconded by Richard Huber, any more discussion? Dan, is there any way that you can? Dan, is there any way that you can put this in a few words or less instead of a whole page on what the decision is?
Well, it's just, all we're doing is we're asking the WCA to advocate for a solution for all the affected counties. So this is going to get delivered to WCA and taken up at the annual meeting in September. So it's official county policy, WCA policy.
All right, we have motion and a second on the table to accept this LCO Evers decision. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yes. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dan, I would assume you wanted four G taken off?
No, no, we have to vote on that. We put that on at the last minute. If you want to bring it up, I'll talk about it.
Pardon me?
If you want to bring it up, we'll talk about it.
Okay, four G Resolution RO six twenty twenty-three, dash fourteen forty-seven. Resolution authorizing issuance and delivery of allowances. Is that what that is?
Yes. All right, so before my time, but some of you will remember it, I believe it's nineteen and twenty. The county basically, what's the word I'm looking for? Well, we didn't give them, we guaranteed some loans for MMC. It totals about seventeen point five million. It was two different loans. It was loans for construction at the hospital. Anyhow, so last year Congress changed how interest rates are figured out. It used to be on the London Interbank LIBOR. And so they changed it to a different one. And because the loan documents are specifically state LIBOR for the, for future interest rates, there needs to be amendment to change it to the new, new standard mandated by contractors. In order to make the loans still valid and collectible by the, by the lender. So so they're asking us to just make that one change to change it from to the new standard.
Dan, I'll make that motion.
So yeah, so far as the new stadium.
George Busey will second.
I have a motion by Kathy Schute and a second by George Busey to approve the Resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of allowances.
I would like a roll call vote, please.
Addressing the chair, discussion.
George.
Yeah, I, I'm sure a lot of people don't understand these rates. So London Interbank offered rate is a reference between banks lending to one another in the London market. The secured overnight financing rate is effectively the U S federal funds rate, which is basically the overnight lending between banks within the United States. These banks, their LIBOR rate and the federal funds or SOFR rates track almost exactly on top of one another. You can look at the data. So I think everybody should be comfortable with this. Thank you.
All right, roll call vote.
Franek.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Miranda. Busey.
Yes.
Mika.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Schute.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
Ellefson.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Kufal.
Yes.
Nineteen yes, pass.
That was unanimous vote.
Okay, next we need a motion to go into closed session. Mike? Need a motion by Mike Berlin, second by Kathy Schute. If you want a closed session, roll call.
Stark. Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin. Miranda.
Yes.
Busey.
Yes.
Mika.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Schute.
Yes.
Carl. Weiner. Murdig.
Yes.
Ellefson.
Yes.
McKenzie.
For the purpose of discussing the county administrators' review, yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Kufal.
Yes.
Franek.
Yes.
Okay, move everybody.